A meeting to order. And am I on? Am I? It says it's on.
Yeah, you're on.
I'm on. Okay. You guys are just not hearing me.
You hear it when we tap.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Ms. Breeden.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
Ms. Stevens.
Here.
Four present, one absent, we do have a quorum.
Okay, we have no closed session. And so we have the opening of our regular session and Jessica, would you read us in the budgets, agents?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please rename standing.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity tonight to come together as a collective group to put our heads together to solve some problems for our community. We thank you for a light agenda tonight. We appreciate that as well. However, in the agenda, we have two items that are quite important that require all of our brains, hearts, and minds to make a few decisions on those things. Be with the public and be with the leaders up here as we try to address these two issues. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, there is no council report, is that correct? City Attorney's report?
No report, thank you.
Okay. No presentations, public comment. I'm going to invite a special person to come up and introduce himself and tell you what he's doing and why he's here.
Ms. Breeden, just before you do that, we did not approve the agenda, so we need to do that before we can move on.
Did I miss that?
It was way up at the top.
I'm sorry. I'll go back. Wait a minute. Can we interrupt you one minute? I don't want to be so wrong that I've missed everything. A motion to approve the agenda, please.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Breeden.
Yes.
Mr. Barnes.
Yes.
Ms. Stevens.
Aye.
Four ayes, motion carries.
Okay, now we can get into the good stuff. Please introduce yourself to us.
Good evening, everyone. My name is John Kersey. I am the new Community Plans Liaison Officer for China Lake. I am replacing Tim Fox, who I know was here for many years representing the base and working well with the city. And I hope to continue to continue that role and keep those relations open with the city. I come here from 29 Palms Marine Base doing a similar position, so I am familiar at least with the desert area. I'm just getting used to the community of Ridgecrest, and it's been an excellent state thus far. So I'm looking for many years in the future.
Well, thank you. We appreciate you being here. We're looking forward to all your input and work. And I know there's tons of committees you're going to be attending, and so we welcome you and thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there any other public comment?
Good evening, City Council members. I'm here at the request of a friend of Ridgecrest. He submitted a four projects to the City Council last time, and I was wondering if the City Council had a chance to read it. And maybe with the different committees, they could start moving it forward. I feel that it would be four really good projects for Ridgecrest. Most of the projects listed are, they will have money through grants and so on and so forth. I really wish that the council would take a close look at it, and I think it would be beneficial to this community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sam. I know it did go to staff, and I assume it's being contemplated on how to get it out.
I know the quality of life is, heard about it a little.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Mike Neal, Mrs. Strand. Very interesting to see you in a suit instead of the uniform for a change, so I suppose we'll get used to that temporarily. I'd like to address something here that, little information that I got after having to ask for it and search it out. And as we all know, in the muggy heat, everybody's aware of the need to want to stay cool or have cooler activities. And we've had a big debate about the pool. And then the attendant water complex at the IWV EDC has been pitching. If you noted, I believe it was the DI article, there were several, what I would call tickler statements from different people in there about how they wouldn't mind paying an assessment to fund that, which obviously implies a tax assessment by, you know, something put on supposedly a private group. So I tried to attend the meetings, this group, and was unable to get myself allowed to come to them. However, several of you here obviously go to those. I'll read the list of the people on the EDC, which is just, to my knowledge, just a group of people who all just kind of decided they just wanted to get together, put each other, their friends, cohorts, on the board, whatever. So it's John Watkins, Donna Hocker, Jan Bennett, Chris Ellis, Pat Blebaugh, Jim Suver, Richard's Chamber Rep, Dan Spurgeon, René Westalusk. Those all seem to be pretty vanilla and nothing, you know, anybody would question. However, the next becomes a little more interesting. Representative for McGlees and Denny Klein, Representative for the City, Eddie Thomas, Peggy Breeden, and Gary Parsons. So...
Peggy Breeden was not representing the city. Peggy Breeden is representing the Swap Sheet. My membership is through the Swap Sheet.
Okay.
So I don't want to imply that there's more than one person attending on behalf of the city.
That's not actually what I was implying. And I'm not implying anything. I'm giving some facts so that the rest of...
Okay, well, I was sharing mine, too.
The rest of the council. You get your hand up. Do you want to question Mr. Martin?
No.
Or do you just get comfortable?
No, no.
Okay. Okay. Anyway, for myself, I guess I'm a little disconcerted to see this supposedly, you know, advertise this private group, having these representatives from City Council, county, staff member from the city. And Ms. Breeden, who says she represents Swap Sheet, but, you know, I hope, you know, Ms. Breeden, you can split your brain when you go to these meetings and, you know, not even be concerned whatsoever with anything for the city. But looking forward to the day that I'm going to predict that the EDC comes before us here wanting to build their big water park, wanting $5 to $7 million, and I'm going to say they're going to want our money, almost undoubtedly. I don't know where in the world they're going to come up with that kind of money and not want the taxpayers' money. Having council members, having city staff members, even county reps on that group formulating plans, and, you know, they have, they've had one informational meeting about their water parks so far, but in their decisions, like I said, I can't even get into the meeting just to sit and listen. I can't, you know, I've asked to be allowed to come, and I get no response. So, and then I'm told, well, they're trying to have a membership drive, but they want to do this, or whatever. Basically, I'm being put off, and I can't observe any other statements being made. So it's, you know, a private group. They don't have to let me in. But when it comes around to them coming back here, trying to pitch for the taxpayers' dollars to fund projects that has been totally under their formulation, then I'm just going to expect any council members who are sitting in this group to recuse themselves from the process altogether. Otherwise, there's going to be a large debate over that whole thing as a separate issue outside of the water park itself.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comment? Okay, the next item is under Council Announcements. I'd like to take the lead on these two. I'd invite you to watch the videos. There are six one-minute videos that was done by the IWV EDC. And trying to encourage tourism, and they're exciting, they're beautiful, and they do a great job presenting what we have in this community, something really unique in those that surround us and this community. So I invite you to watch.[616.62]
To have any items pulled, and I'm going to read them. Number one, propose action to approve draft minutes of the City of Richcrest City Council successor redevelopment agency financing authority, housing authority, regular meeting dated July nineteenth, two thousand seventeen. Propose action to approve professional services services agreement with the engineering firm of David Evans and Associates to provide design, engineering, and construction management for a highway safety improvement project intersection improvement for South Down Street at West Bowman Road in the amount of forty-four thousand, forty-four thousand dollars, and authorize the interim city manager Ron Strand to sign the agreement. Number three, propose action to approve a professional services agreement with the engineering firm of David Evans and Associates to provide design, engineering, and construction management for highway safety improvement projects. Crosswalk improvement at school sites in the amount of sixty-four thousand dollars, and authorize the interim city manager Ron Strand to sign agreement. Number four, propose action to approve a resolution for the Richcrest City Council authorizing the city manager to enter into a memorandum of agreement with the Sahara Sands Unified School District for Law Enforcement Services Schools Resources Officer. And that is, let me do the, and that is it. Would anybody like to have them pulled?
You do number four?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Thomas, you're missing number five in the supplemental agenda.
Yeah, unless, here, sorry, I didn't give it to you.
No problem.
Right there.
Thank you. Propose action to approve proposal of the recruitment of the city manager with Mathis Consulting Group, and authorize the city attorney to sign their proposal. Those are the five consent items. Would anybody like to have any one of them pulled?
Two and three.
Item number four?
Five.
So that's...
Is there public that would like?
Any from the public that would like to pull any of the items? Outside of one.
And five. No one pulled five.
All right, well then we will...
Oh, she did, okay.
Those are discussion, for discussion and other action items.
Okay, so motion to approve.
So we need a motion to approve item number one and item number...
That's it.
That's it.
Show move.
Second.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Ms. Breeden?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent, motion carries.
Okay, item number two. Who asked for that to be?
I, my comments on item two and three are pretty much the same. I just, between the two, we're spending a hundred and eight thousand dollars to hire consultant to do the design and construction management, and this is just something that I'm hoping we can start to move away from or analyze to see if the city would be better off hiring more public work staff so that, I mean, this is just an instance of these two projects, and I know we've approved a lot of hiring for the design and the construction management, and I'd just like to know how much, maybe if we could look at last calendar year, how much we spent on the design and construction management consultant fees, and if we would be better off maybe looking at hiring additional staff and doing some of that work ourselves, if it wouldn't save us some money, so.
Who's gonna take that? Okay, Lauren?
Certainly if you have more Indians, the more, the more wars you can fight, but yeah, if we, if we were to consider additional staff, we could certainly try to undertake some of these projects. I do need to alert you that the, these are federally funded projects, and the requirements for federally funded projects are quite rigorous in terms of the applications, the, the inspections, design, it's, it's a very rigorous process there. So you, you would have to look at staff's ability and the size of a project to be able to think about doing the design. You'd need to make sure you had the staff that had the proficiency to take on different types of design. If you have things of traffic engineering nature, it's advisable to have that registration on board. So I would, I would, I would caution you in that effort, in that sometimes you do require a specialist to be able to accomplish some of the projects that the city does undertake, and also to be conscious of the size of the project and the amount of work necessary for these federally funded projects.
Will the actual construction of these projects be federally funded as well?
Yes, the HSIP grants are a hundred percent funded by the federal government. And that, that does include the design and the construction management.
But we could be reimbursing ourselves if we had our own staff person working on it.
You do have the ability to set up where staff can charge against the projects, yes, you can.
Thank you.
Is there any other council comments or questions?
Well, I just, I just would like to say that in the general spirit of the thing, like you were saying, Mr. Colt, that you would caution against certain thoughts that because there are a lot of things involved with this, I think I would just like to add in some support to Councilman Stevens to say that likewise on the other side, I would like to, I don't think the word is caution, the city or the staff or anyone, but just to be aware of the fact that anytime on any of these things where we can walk, walk the dog about can we in fact take on this challenge, do we have the people to do it? Can we bring our staff up with a special course or a special training or bring in one special contractor to help do it? I would just say not as a cautionary note, but as a positive, spring-loaded to yes note about trying to, you know, I read the thing on this crosswalk, we're talking about one intersection here, and we're talking about a crosswalk improvements, I read that. I'm not a public works expert, but it doesn't look like rocket science to improve a crosswalk. I know that there, yeah, it probably is, the way the government makes it work, but all I'm saying is in the spirit of, of trying to experiment with new things to make new ideas happen to where we can possibly cut costs, if you're going to present an awareness to us, I'd like to, you know, support Ms. Stevens and present an awareness back to the staff, maybe sometimes we can try on these things, that's all I'm saying.
Yes, well, that's, that's well received, and we, we would be able to identify those unique aspects to these projects. One particular aspect to a project is we are required to go through an environmental review for every project that we go through. We're also required to do right-of-way certifications. You know, there's, there's, there's a lot of elements to these projects.
If they do an environmental review on a crosswalk, huh?
Exactly.
Wow.
No, it would be a categorical exemption.
Wow.
But we're required to file an environmental document for each project. Now, as for the crosswalks, I guarantee you that we'll have to do some sort of review to make sure that those vacant parcels around that Bowman intersection, we're gonna have to do an environmental review to make sure there's no tortoises or Mojave ground squirrels or anything that our improvements are gonna impact, so.
I know, that's entirely out of your hands, and my sympathies are with you.
Those require specialists, and so, you know, I'd love to be able to give you an example of all the aspects of these federal projects. I think it would be a learning experience for you to know what we have to go through, what we have to consider in these. I think you'd be impressed.
Well, this is why, this is why cost of government is just astronomical, you know, it's just astronomical.
It is. If you were to really analyze the cost that it takes for staff, consultants, just to get these projects, it would, it'd be, it would amaze you.
Right, okay, thank you, thank you.
Is there any public comment, or any, let me wait one minute, Mr. Matthews is...
Madam Mayor, point of clarification. Are we discussing two and three, or just two? Because I've heard references to three, which is the one I want to comment on.
I made my comments about both of them, if you want to comment specifically about one, that's...
Are you handling them both right now?
Yes, yes.
Okay. On number three, Mr. Martin, you got ahead of me because I didn't, it didn't dawn on me until just a while ago as to what that was really considering, and I have, I did not get a chance to look up the information, so I would like to know what that project involves, what improvements are there, just putting new paint on the yellow stripes, I, you know, I, I don't know what the project is, and I'd like it clarified for the public.
Yes, sir, Mr. Matthews, there's, there's actually quite a bit. It sounds very simple, however, there are requirements that the, that we must satisfy for these...
Where is it, first of all?
Well, we have eight of them at each of the schools. We have Graff Avenue at Eileen, Drummond Avenue at Sanders, Los Flores Avenue at Sierra View Street, Church Avenue at Helena, Upjohn Avenue at Guam, Guam Avenue at Iowa, Gold Canyon Street at, at Sandora Street, and Gateway Boulevard south of Upjohn Street. And the, the MUTCD has the criteria for our crosswalks that we have to follow, and that includes advanced signing, street legends, we have rapid flashing beacons that are gonna be at these crosswalks, there's also specifications for the actual crosswalk and its configuration. So there's, there's a lot more than just saying a crosswalk. There's a lot of pertinences to a crosswalk that we have to follow guidelines for.
Are these new requirements from the feds or somebody, or what?
No, sir, this is a safety improvement program. We're trying to increase the safety aspect of these school crosswalks.
All right, wow, thank you very much.
Okay, is there any other public comment?
Yes, I'd like to address what's been brought up previously about the cost and the monies being dispersed to consultants. I might suggest to whoever thinks this might be a good idea for a future addenda item is that we have a presentation for, let's say, money spent for the last two years on design consultants, how many hours of consultant time we got out of that, and I think just with that, it would probably be real easy to figure out whether it would be more cost-effective to have your own staff member to deal with these things or continue hiring consultants. I, I would like to ask, if Mr. Colt should be able to answer this and these two particular projects, how mu, how much per hour is the prime, say, say the head guy in the consultant firm charging?
The, the project principal, they're usually on the order of, I think it's like a hundred and fifty dollars an hour in that range, and then project managers are in the range of about a hundred and thirty-five dollars an hour, and then I think clerical staff is on the order of sixty-five dollars an hour.
Okay, all right. Now, as to specific comments on the particular projects, the first one, obviously, I believe is for to get stop signs at Bowman's and Down Street. That's been a long time, too long coming in a lot of people's minds. I'd also like to make comment that visibility there from coming east on, on Bowman is impeded, and I have fed this to city staff, as to the high growing weeds there along the fence line by, by the drain sump, and nothing's happened so far, they're still there. So I would hope staff could get that taken care of, it just entails chopping some weeds down. As far as the crosswalks, the thing that's obvious in its absence here, of course, is the, the crosswalk that's been being pleaded for, for years on Down Street in front of the charter school, along by the charter school there, and, and I've heard statements in the past made about why we can't, can't have one there, can't put one there right now, so forth and so on. I guess I'm disappointed that we couldn't find some way to put something there. I hope as soon as it is at all feasibly possible, we're gonna jump on that, and we're gonna get a crosswalk put in front of that school. We, we've had, I think in one, one case, several ladies come down here with real serious heartfelt pleas to get a crosswalk there, and obviously they're still wanting it and not getting it.
If I may?
Would you please respond to that? Because it sounds like we're the ones that are not wanting it to do it.
We have a hundred percent complete plans on the Downs reach there between Upjohn, and it does include a crosswalk there, and we are required to have improvements in order to have a legal crosswalk for a school. We're required to have curb and gutter on both sides of that street, but those are included within our a hundred percent complete Down Street project.
Lauren, does that include the weeds that he's talking about at Bowman and the visibility? Because he, he...
We, we were talking about the charter.
Right, 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 but he mentioned that also, I...
Yes, and we, we do continually monitor that for site distance, and if you've noticed something there, we'll take a look at it.
Okay, is there any other public comment on these items, any other council comment? Okay, motion?
I'll move.
Are we gonna do a motion for two and three since we've been discussing both? Okay.
Show move. Second.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent, motion carries.
Okay, so three and four, five. I asked that one to be pulled, can we just give a little bit of public input on that? Sir?
Are we talking four or five?
I thought we just approved four and five.
No, we did.
I'm, so you're three and four.
Two and three.
Two and three. We need to have Acting Chief McLaughlin.
Eddie, you need to do what you were doing. Okay, start over, everybody.
Number four?
Number four.
All right, Acting Chief McLaughlin has some clarifications we have to make on the MOU.
Yeah. All right, sir.
Okay, on number four, the agreement between Sierra Sands and, and the city to put the school resource, two school resource officers back within the district. I made an oversight and forgot to put the new Murray Middle School in, in section number one, and somehow the numbering got messed up, so number six needs to be added and just moved down, so if you choose to approve, if Mr. Strand would be allowed to sign the agreement with Murray Middle School added and the number correction.
Is there any problem doing that, just adding it on? We're not adding something new.
No, it shouldn't change the content of it. The, the MOU says that we're responsible for all the schools within the city limits, so it does include Murray, but the district is just a little more comfortable just having it in there, so it doesn't change anything about the agreement substantially, it just clarifies what's already in there.
All right, is there any council comments or questions on that item?
I just had one for you, Acting Chief, and that is, we went from, how long ago did we just have one officer that we went to two, and was there a great demand in reference to police presence at the school?
Yes, the, it's been about eight to ten years now that we've had the two in there, and the second one, one, it was with a, with a cops grant, when we obtained that to add another officer, which was paid fifty percent from the grant and then the other part by Sierra Sands. By adding, they want to continue the two because those guys are busy, and it allows them the ability to, one covers the high school while the other one is able to go to the middle schools and elementary when needed, and they, they keep very busy, so it is needed.
Were you able to see a significant change in reference to, I don't know if it's, we should say crimes, but the activities of the youth?
Right. The ability that it allows by having these officers in there is, not only does it provide a positive, usually a positive, they get to talk to these officers, the officers get to talk to the kids, and they're able to intervene because once they build that relationship, there's kids that will come to them and give them information, and then they can intervene long before it even happens, in most of the cases. As if we use our stats with Teen Court, or with the inception with two officers in there, where we used to arrest five hundred plus teens a year, is we're down into the low twos, if not into the high one hundreds that we are currently arresting, so I think that's a direct reflection of having these officers in there and interacting with the kids all the time.
Any other council comment? Is there any public comment? Okay, a motion?
Show move.
Second.
Mr. Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Breeden?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent, motion carries.
Okay. Number five, Mr. Strand, if you would...
Yeah, Madam Mayor, I can, I can cover this. At the request of City Council, our city attorney, Keith Lemieux put out a request for proposal for recruitment of the vacant city manager position. Proposals were received, they were reviewed in closed session by City Council, and City Council selected the Mathis Consulting Group to lead the consulting and the recruitment efforts for the, to fill the vacant city manager position. What we're asking for tonight is approval from the council for Mr. Lemieux to enter into that contract with the Mathis Consulting Group, and also to allocate sixteen thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars out of the general fund to pay for this recruitment effort.
Is there any council discussion or questions? Is there any public comments?
Yes, Dave Matthews, I was just wondering, since I'm not privy to closed sessions, should we probably include a search for a financial director as well?
That has been allowed in the contract, and that's left up to me to decide whether or not we need that help.
Okay.
Show. Just have several questions here on specifics that are in the contract, that's in the agenda here. The first one, let me just, it says, the first section in paragraph D, it says, Dr. Mathis has knowledge of this current council and staff, what does that mean exactly? Has he had involvement around here before? Does he already know our staff members and council members?
We have not, council has not had any individual or collective discussions with them. He is aware of who we are, and we are going to be having interviews next week after the contract is entered into with him, what we'd like to see or want to do.
So even though it says he has knowledge, nobody's ever actually talked to him prior to this?
No, he's, he's, he's gonna be doing one, like a full one hour or so interview with each and every one of us, Mike, to, to, to see what we need, what we're looking for, what he needs to recruit for, it's part of his, his process. He's been doing this for twenty-something years, he's very well respected in the league of cities. He came very highly recommended, he's a small shop, and, and we compared him with, you know, some of these are much larger and more expensive, he's cost-effective and got a good reputation. He'll come here and find out what we need.
All right, did that statement just made it sound like he, he already knew some of the council or some of the staff or whatever, he just, you know, so I just wanted to get clarification on that.
Has he had involvement with staff at all, Run? Could you address that, please?
He's had a little bit of contact with me just for the contract, but I don't believe we've ever used his service before in the past, not to my knowledge.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's see, oh, okay. I'll skip a couple of these things I've underlined before, but there are, there is another one or two here in the proposal activities section, and paragraphs three, this, this concerns me to some degree. Says he's gonna clarify, develop and clarify the requirements and traits with input on the needs of the next city manager. Then it says if desired council and Dr. Mathis could hear from the key community people and staff as they share traits and profile desired of their next city manager, now that, key community people, what is that supposed to, who are those supposed to be? How do they determine those, and in, under what format is the council gonna hear from these supposed key community people? Are we gonna have an open meeting there to do this?
Yeah, Mr. Neal, I think that that, those items will be developed during the individual interviews with council, and who they deem, I mean, ultimately, it's the council's decision on who they select and how the process goes. So it'll really be up to them to develop it as they meet with Mr. Mathis, and they come up with a plan on how they're gonna address it. These, these are just bullet points, this isn't set in stone. Ultimately, it's up to the council to decide which way and how, and the manner in which it's gonna be conducted.
Okay, well, this is just, I'm just reading off what it says, the activities are going to be here, so...
But as he says, it's not written in stone, and we have the option, when we talk to, to Mr. Mathis, we have the, and his staff, that we have the opportunity to resent our concerns and wishes, and I think that's highly appropriate.
I, I think the key term we're missing there is the word proposal, which basically he's proposing these as a possibility, it's really gonna be up to the council to decide.
Okay. Kind of along slightly similar line, further down, it talks about established interviews and closing dates with the recruitment committee council members, and I'm aware that, you know, in the past, staff positions have been determined by committees that have just, nobody in the community knew who the people were, and, or nor how they were selected, but, you know, they got the opportunity to voice their input on these staffing, and they weren't council members, they weren't elected people. So my basic comment here, and it's gonna go along the lines through the, the email that I sent to the entire council, is that, you know, we need a clear appearance and operational appearance, that this whole process does not be taken up and, and performed in any way to give any preference to what people know what this means, the good old boys around town, anybody who has been around here willing influence and comes up on the list is not going to be met very well, I do not believe at all. So, you know, going out as a job recruitment, widening the scope, finding the best possible candidate from a large geographical area, as large as what seems reasonable, but certainly outside of the city of Richcrest at least, and finding some good talent is, is what this town needs. They don't need people who will bring us more of the same that we've had in prior years, because I think a lot of people would testify to the fact that they're not real, real happy with what we got in prior years, and they want something different, and I certainly do.
Mike, will you, can I ask a favor? I'm, and I'm saying this with respect, as much as I possibly can. Would you give us the benefit of the doubt to get through this process, and if as we go through it, you are not happy with it, tell us, but don't assume that nothing is gonna be changed or be done or anything differently than was done in the past. We may use some of those options. That's why all five of us are going to talk to, and be, and listen to and learn from our consultant, but to start out with, we're gonna do the same good old ways is grossly unfair to this council, and quite frankly, I resent it.
I don't think I said, did I say that?
That's exactly what you said.
Oh, then let me clarify, we, we, we don't want to see that. I'm trying to urge the council to the best course of action that will be, you know, an objective process that looks at people strictly based on their talents and qualities.
Not how long they've been here, not how long they've never been here. We wanna look at them overall. Give us that opportunity, please.
And I will take you up on your offer if I don't like what happens.
I, I'm sure you will. I appreciate... I appreciate that, thank you. Okay, is there any other counsel comment? Any other public comment? A motion?
I move. Second.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Breeden.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Ms. Stevens?
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent, motion carries.
Okay, I asked for this item to be put on because, quite frankly, we always go, the first vote's here, the second vote's here, third vote's here, fourth and fifth vote every single time. And I wanted to find a way to do it in a different manner, so it's not the same person voting first, nor the same person voting last. Rika, would you talk about what you found out, and, and share with us what others, if you can? I don't think we need every one of those cities listed about what they're doing, but what was the general consensus?
So what I did was, I reached out to my city clerk listserv, and I sent a general question out, and asked all the city clerks how they handle their roll call votes. And what's in your agenda packet is a five-page summary of everything that they, that I got back. They ranged from, starting with the person that made the motion, the person that seconded, and then right to left, they ranged from, always starting with the mayor, then going down the line to mayor pro temp, vice mayor. They did alphabetical order, I mean, there's varies, various ones in here. The biggest thing that I got out of all of that was, the majority of them did not have a policy written in stone. It was just an accepted procedure, which is kind of like what we've been doing, right to left, or however we do it, you know? So, it's up to you if you want to form a policy or not, but it's not mandated, and it's certainly not used across the board. So it's just a matter of where you guys are comfortable. Some of them even, you know, randomly before the meeting, the city clerk would draw the five names out of the hat, and that's the order she would use for the night, you know, type of a thing. So it's totally up to you guys on what's most comfortable, and how we can vary it.
I also asked the Water District, who recently got a, what is, an electronic voting procedure that's been established, and that cost was, I believe, about $10,000. I don't know as we want to spend $10,000 to have electronic voting, but I do like the idea that you vote based on your own input, from, from what the research you've done, the input from the people, and the idea that I don't vote yes, because Mr. Thomas voted yes, I vote yes because I thought that, and think that is the best way to do it. So, but I don't know that it's a, I don't know as I want us to spend that money now, but I would like us to look at a way of doing it, and maybe, Rika, if you would be willing, and, and council agrees, and staff agrees, change it up each time, however you decide whether it's left or right, first or second, whatever, just so it's not the same way all the time. What about, what does council think about it?
Rick, you had a number that you had given us during the budget hearing, and what was, because you said something about you were opting to have a maintenance package, because the Water District from the meetings, I observed they had some challenges with theirs.
Yeah, you know, I don't have those figures in front of me, but it was roughly around the $10,000 range, and my understanding was it did include the maintenance package.
Oh, it did.
Yeah. And, and I looked into the exact same thing. I went over and sat down with, with Rose Coke over there and went over their system, and that was the one I presented to you at budget time. So it would be just like theirs. And there's others out there, I could research others, but that's the one I, I based it on.
In reference to the Water one, were they, did they have any problems with it? Was it, was it functional? Did it work?
As far as I know, they're not having any, they're just getting used to it, is more than anything.
I've, I've been at all their meetings, and the only time they seemed to have issues was the first few votes, because they weren't sure, it was new, and now that they're, the votes are, the directors make their vote, and it isn't until everybody's voted that the results are shown.
Correct. Yeah, so you would have no idea, you know, what the others voted until it's all in the system.
And just for clarification, we would always show how the people voted, right?
Absolutely. That's required.
You have to legally?
If, if I may, Mayor? Correct, that, that's in the Brown Act, that there's no secret voting, and it has to be shown.
It's shown electronically at the Water District on, in their board up front.
And that, that would then show up on the, on the video, and of course, it would be in the minutes.
Last night, when, because, because it's like, usually I have booklets about, you know, two inches thick or so, and so last night, when we got this little one and no close session, I was just happier than a clam, and I said, "You know what? I'm going to take my time, read all this stuff," because I, I could, so I kicked back in the recliner, and I read every one of these things. So, two things right off the start, out the get-go, I want to thank you, Mayor, for, for addressing this, because it's been a little tiny knit with me, but I hadn't said anything about it, but I thank you for calling it out. And also, Rika, thank you for, this is brilliant, I wish we could go to this level of detail on everything, because it gives us exactly what we need to make a decision. So thank you for doing this.
You're welcome.
Now, I'm not saying it was, it was the best Friday night I ever had. We're not going to go there, but I did read all of this. Basically, and then I thought about it, walked around the house, and said, "Huh, okay." So like Rika said, most of them had the mayor voting last, and they explained their rationale, then they had the mayor pro temp before that, some had the vice mayor. Two companies even used a random.org, with a dang software picks everybody for you. I thought that was, um, okay, but I, Rika, I didn't want to force that upon you, dear God. Then I guess you can flip a coin, and you can do all sorts of a hundred other ways. But here's the thing, at the end of the, at the end of the night, I sat down, I talked with my wife, and, and I said, "So let's try to do the drill on this," and Mike, and go, "How is it that you can get a 100% neutral, totally, totally neutral, totally objective, where no one's influenced at the final time?" Because we discuss it, discuss it, discuss it, it's time of vote. And no matter how you slice it, what I came up with, was that no matter how you slice it, if you do any one of these eight pages of alternatives, there's always a little bit of an element, no matter how you do it, there's always a little bit of an element where, if you're on the borderline between decision A and decision B, and you really don't want to do, and your buddy or pal on the council, or however you want to call it, it's not a conspiracy, Mike, but we all have people we'd just rather spend more time with on At the time of voting, we can be influenced, because it's like, they vote like that, and yep, I'm going to vote like it too. When in fact, and then, and I said, "Well, how do you get around that?" And I posed this to the, to Lloyd, I said, "Hey Lloyd, you guys are the master manipulators." And he said, "Well, I hope you meant that in a good way." I said, "Of course I did, but these guys are geniuses of thinking how to, how you can conceivably get around something, or conceivably twist it a little half an ounce." And I said, "Can you come up with a way that's more neutral and more objective than this electronic system? Because I can't." To me, the electronic thing is, you do a discussion, when it's time to vote, everybody puts your big boy and girl panties on, looks straight ahead, and votes your conviction. Boom. And I cannot come up with any other way that's fairer than, I just can't, but I, I tasked them. Did you all come up with anything?
No, sir.
Okay, that, okay, so I, I just can't, I, I like it. I like the electronic, and, and I, I think it would alleviate all of this business, should the mayor be first, in the middle, and the last, and the mayor pro temp, da-da-da-da-da-da? It's, all of that goes away. I, and also, I found, I talked to some folks in Bakersfield, and that's the way they do it, and it works perfectly, and it cuts out all of that. So whatever it's worth, I, I thank you for the research, and I'd vote for the electronic deal.
We, we have that item budgeted, do we not?
That was my question. No.
It was in our budget, we did have the.
No, no, we do not, it was cut.
It is not, it was cut?
Yes.
Okay.
We decided to do the code.
Yeah, we decided to do the recodification instead of the.
Well, that was more important than this, but.
But in my opinion, this is a decision tool for the next, God knows how many hundred years. It's a decision tool. And so, it's kind of a minor-major thing. You go, "Well, it's a minor thing," but it's also a major thing, because if it affects even 3% of our vote and our decision, maybe 2%, who's, you need a computer to figure that out. If it affects our position and our vote, dealing with millions of dollars over the next 20 years, it's a major decision, although a minor cost. And so I, I think we should do best to find the money to pay for that gizmo.
Do you have a pocket of money, sir, sitting anywhere that is not being utilized? Like some of our, could we use it for economic development, like cab funds or something? I'm being facetious here, folks.
Oh, and want an answer? Turn the mic on.
I thought you were being facetious and didn't need an answer. You can pull it from the tax allocation bond funds. We were planning on coming back for some reallocation for some IT issues, we can bring it back at that time. I would assume we'd be approaching council with that the first meeting in September, so we can include that in that presentation at the time, if that's acceptable?
I would agree, if it come back with more information and let us make the decision when all five of us are here.
Correct.
And have that opportunity, and the dollars we know are there.
Correct.
Okay. Is there any public comment on this?
Hi, good evening, Scott Miller. Oh, hold on. Hello, there you are. Does the vote have to be out loud?
Out loud.
When you're voting on something?
We do.
I know, does it have to be, is the question? The reason that I ask that question is there's certain TV shows when they're taking a vote, and they hit a button, red or green. Red is yes, green is yes, red is no. So if you're going through, and she were to ask council, "How do you vote?", Councilman Thomas hits a little button in front of him, I think it costs about 15 bucks, it glows red or glows green, and you could see it there, and say, Councilman Martin didn't answer, "Mr. Martin, we need an answer." He hits the button. The answer's not visible to you all, but it would be visible to the cameras, be visible to the crowd. I think it's probably 15 bucks a head versus 10,000 bucks.
Well, I, what I like about it, I'm sure that system would do that, right, Rika? Why not? I mean.
There's different systems out there, I certainly can research a different one, I just went with that one.
Well, but look, what you just proposed is great, that might save, well, it's a minute, but a minute times 12 per meeting, times, you know what I mean? It's a time saver.
It's just a simple red button.
I like it, sir, I, I mean, I, maybe I'm speaking out of term, I like it, and I imagine it would do that.
I think that that system only has the two options, yes and no, where we would have to have abstain, possibly a three-button type system, you know, we'd need something a little bit more than that, but it's certainly can be looked into.
Yeah, red, yellow, green. Red, no, red, yellow, green. Red, no, yellow, abstain, and green, go. I think I said that right. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is just.
Mr. Martin, I have to agree with you, there's no more impartial way to do it, but as far as answering it out loud, rather than just having it displayed, I am in a position where I can comment on people maybe watching on TV, or listening at home, not necessarily watching. So the sound should be there eventually, to verify the result of the vote.
I could, I could still announce it, once it displays.
Would it work, Mr. Matthews, once she got the tally?
Who's talking?
Right here. I said, "Would it work, Mr. Matthews, if she got the tally and announced it, so the people in the public could hear it, sir? Would that help?"
Yes, yes.
Just like we do.
But I, I think the video, if you're going to go with the machine, and it shows up on, on wherever, eventually, you still need to do an audio result.
We're probably required to by ADA anyways. I think that's a great idea.
I think you, I think you may be right.
Yeah.
I haven't checked into it, but that is, that is true. Thank you.
Okay, so we have staff with direction, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Neal.
Actually, almost everything, I was going to say, it's been said, well, I would just summarize and make a strong suggestion, and that is, you, you do proceed rapidly towards having an electronic voting system, that, that will massively increase objectivity of votes. And I can tell you right now that you can, spending $10,000 for something like that was, is really a waste of money. With about three pairs of wires, and a power supply, and some displays, for about less than $500, you can have your system. I guarantee you that.
Well, that was just to, to show what another agency did, and what they.
But it's kind of like that doing the spotted owl for the crosswalk, our hands are tied on a lot of this stuff.
Well, obviously, the Water District, high dollar, I've been there, I know, it's this computer-based something or other, you know, you always pay a tiny money for that. All you need is some switches, some wires, some lights, that's it. Everybody votes, you can, you could put the, the switches within little high-walled boxes, so, you know, councilman next to you can't see what buttons you punched, and then it comes back over to the city clerk, and, and city clerk announces the vote when it's done. And I believe that's all entirely legal, and then it's more objective. And I've, I can testify to the fact that I have seen clear appearance that votes were influenced, that other, that council members made by what they saw prior, especially if you're at the end of the line, and three or four others have voted before you or something. And we, that's why for years and years, we always got consensus votes, even though it was clear that there was some disagreement, and that doesn't really convey the full truth to the public, when that goes on either. So, you know, I, I will, I'll help design the thing, it's, it's, I can, it's all in my brain right here, it's really simple, there's really nothing to it, okay?
Thank you, sir. Is there any other comment? Okay, staff has direction to go ahead and give us some options. Okay, the next item I asked to be on the agenda, because Assemblyman Fong's office sent me a letter asking for support for, or rejection of this bill, and Jed, would you talk to us about it, please?
Yes, ma'am. Well, Senator Scott Wiener authored Senate Bill 384, which he wants the ability for bars or liquor, like liquor sales to be extended till 4:00 a.m. Well, as you can see, what I prepared, the, California already leads the nation in alcohol-related incidents, as it is. So, it is staff's recommendation that we author a letter to Mr. Fong, and opposing the increase, and some of the concerns that our community should have, you know, with the potential over-serving, increased in violence, and all that stuff. We also have something that happens on a daily basis at 4:00 in the morning, there are several people commuting to Trona to work, so that you have those gentlemen and ladies going to work in Trona, leaving at that time when, when bars would be closing. So, it is our recommendation that we oppose this to Assemblyman Fong.
I was kind of surprised when I read the, the people who were in favor of it. Most of them were chambers of commerce, and then there was a few cities, and I, I think economic development and dollars spent back in this community is great. This is one I think we can do without. I am not in favor of it by any means, I see absolutely no reason to extend, because it's grocery stores, if they're open, it's liquor stores, it's bars, it's everything. I want our people to be able to drive safely, without undue influence of alcohol, even if it's only from 2:00, it ends at 2:00. I'm, I'm, and Assemblyman Fong called the other day, and he said, "How are we doing with this?" And I said, "I think you'll be happy with it, but we just got to get it, go through the process." So is there any counsel comments on this?
Yes, I, I have a couple of comments. First of all, I'm, I'm really, I'm kind of saddened and disgusted that these bills keep coming across our desk. In the past couple of months, we've had bills to decriminalize childhood prostitution, bills to make, to make felony drug possession, ah, misdemeanors, bills to allow felons to leave prison early, whoop, hate when that happens, and other laws that are encouraged gambling and recreational drug reuse are coming across our desk every day. And now, here we go, let's stay open till 4:00. I contend that if you can't get drunk, if you start drinking at 5:00 in the afternoon, and you ain't drunk enough by 2:00, then I say that you're even, you're even a loser in the field of being a drunk. You're not even a successful drunk. I think that's plenty enough. You're not even a successful drunk. I think that's plenty enough time for somebody to get completely and utterly smashed. Now, I, I'm gonna tell you a little story here. Another thing really changes, 'cause I was a young man once, and East Baton Rouge Parish closed down at 2:00 historically. And occasionally, a couple of times of the year, some of the boys would wanna be bad boys and you go across the river, the Mississippi River Bridge, when you wanna be a bad boy. And you go hit these all-night clubs. And there, and I have been, I, okay, you can't get arrested 50 years later, right? I went over there a couple of times and every time, I went like four times, no kidding. And three of the four times, I witnessed in those magic two hours, three of the most horrific beatings. It was like my jaw dropped. We're talking billy clubs and the bouncers come out and people get wild and crazy. People are beaten. Ambulances come. One of them, I said, I told a friend with me, I said, I'm outta here. We're, I'm going, I'm going, I'm going home. I'm going back to East Baton Rouge Parish. This is nasty. Plain nasty and trashy. And after about three of these near hospitalizations where people almost died, I said, this is just trash. And the reason East Baton Rouge Parish doesn't permit that is because from two and four, people get crazy. It is nothing but, but bad stuff that happens. So I saw that. So let's take a look at the California stats. Mr. Fong, 10,572 deaths, 18,000 hospitalizations, 124,000 years' potential life loss, 187,000 years' potential life loss with acute causes, $34 billion cost to the public. And, give me a break. That's just the beginning. So let's see who authors this trashy bill. Well, the author of this trashy bill has only been in office about a year. He's a young guy, San Francisco. He doesn't even acknowledge the current president. On his website, he doesn't, he, he says he's, doesn't honor him at all. He says, let us do this bill to join upstanding places like Chicago, which is a war zone, a war zone. Let's join New York, war zone. Washington DC, anything goes. SB 384, he proudly says, aligns California with at least 15 other states. Well, there's 50 states. And all the rest of them say not only no, but hell no. So I don't think that's something to be proud of, Mr. Wiener. I don't think it's proud of at all. Let's see who is sponsoring this. I told you I had time to read all this.
Obviously. I, I think we all, we all did. I was, as I said, the people that were in favor of it.
Let's take a look who sponsors this Uber. Give me a break. I got news for you. The CEO of Uber might endorse this, but if you ask any of his millions of young drivers who have to go pick up these bloodstained people and drunks who are throwing up in their cabs, if they endorse it, I got news for you. The answer's no. No, they're not endorsing it. So, Mr. Uber, uh. So, we have some others in here, but the bottom line is, when you read this whole deal, it, it, it comes down to one thing. This is a sick bill, special interest kickback, a bad bill, bring America down. Call it whatever you want. I call it unmitigated trash. And I'm tired of all of these bills coming across our desk to damage small communities and large communities alike. There you go, Mr. Fong. I vote hell no. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other comment from the council? Any other comment from the public? Dave, you, there isn't anything you can say that's different from what Wallace just said. Maybe I take it back.
Yeah, I've been there too.
You were in West Baton Rouge Parish?
No, 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 no. But, yeah. Never mind.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Matthews.
There, I, I, I agree that the, I disagree that the time should be extended, wholeheartedly. I mean, I agree if you can't do it in between 5:00 and even 12, then you're a failure. However, I just wanted to point out something. And, and Mr. Martin, you, you read these statistics that were included. However, there's one thing wrong with those statistics. It doesn't say what the time period was. And without knowing that, the statistics that are presented are meaningless. I mean, if it was 50 years...
No, it's a, those stats are attributed to, it says here that California suffers annually more alcohol-related...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I wanted to clarify.
I didn't read it as thoroughly as you did.
So, yeah, if all of this is annual, that's even more horrific.
Okay.
Annual.
I, I, I thank you for the correction.
Okay. No other council comment? Oh, okay.
Yes, I just, I'd say light-heartedly, Mr. Martin, I took offense at being called a loser. I've never been drunk at 2:00 in the morning in my life, so I must be a total loser. On the other hand, you know, this, this is a serious subject, actually. Unfortunately, I believe this probably is undoubtedly a bill put forward by a California Democrat. Is that right?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay.
Assemblyman...
Ultra liberal.
Well, I'd like to welcome you to my club, the club of speaking and not being listened to. Go ahead and write the bill. Democrats will vote for it across the board and it'll pass. So, that's okay. Go ahead and, and write your letter and oppose it and so forth and so on. As far as this basic subject itself, Mr. Acting Chief, I certainly hope that we surreptitiously at least have our own version of saturation patrols at 2:00 in the morning around Ridgecrest, so that any single person who exits a bar's parking lot above the legal limit gets arrested real quick and not allowed even out on the streets long enough to pose a danger to our citizens. We, we do DOI checkpoints in conjunction with, I believe, hopefully still, saturation patrols on, on those, even, but those are generally only six times a year, right?
It varies. Depends on the grant or, or staffing levels at that time.
Okay. Well, I'd just say if I was chief, I would see to it that there wasn't one single drunk person on the streets of Ridgecrest at 2:00 to 3:00 in the morning, if I could at all possibly do that. And I think that's probably a real solution to the problem. Once people figure out, as soon as they hit the street and they're over the legal limit, they're gonna get arrested, they probably won't remain stupid enough to keep doing that for very long. So, anyway, that's it.
I, I'd like to comment on that, Mr. Neal, because I will say that both times I did a ride-along, when the bars were closing, we immediately headed over and parked outside in a very visible location to keep an eye and waited until everyone had cleared out of the area. And when they looked like someone might have started to get into an altercation, we pulled over even closer. So, to help with, you know, watching the people, if they are stumbling to their cars or, you know, preventing fights after they closed. So...
I think that's exactly what the citizens want.
If I may add something to, if, if you read the whole, the whole bill, if it does pass, it will be on the, the government bodies around the state to either approve or disprove in their jurisdiction. So, we would still have the ability to make a decision on that.
That's why I think Assemblyman Fong was so interested, because many, many cities are making comments on it. So if we all can come down on the, on an area, in a way that is effective and strong and shows we don't think we need to have drunks out driving at 4:00 in the morning. So, okay. No other comment?
I just have one, real quick one, in reference to Mr. Neal and Mr. Wallace. Democrats are not the only one that make bad deals.
Dear here. Thank you.
Dear here. Here, here. Yeah, this is not a partisan deal. It just, there was one comment I made because to establish the kind of far in one way or the other with this gentleman on the website. The thing I didn't mention is I have a very impassioned email that a, a, a mother sent to all of the council members. And I asked if I could have permission to use her name. She didn't get back with me in time. But it was a very impassioned, I suggest all the council read it. Her grandmother died of a, of an alcohol-related incident. And she's had horrible deals with alcohol. And currently she has two or three kids who are driving to take classes out of town at 5:00 in the, in the morning. And she made an impassioned plea for all the council members. Dear God, please, it, it, she doesn't wanna put her children at road at risk. And I, so I suggest that everybody read that. And I thank her for taking the time to write.
Okay, so no other discussion than a motion?
A motion that we send a letter in opposition of SB 384.
I second.
Mr. Thomas.
Aye.
Mayor Breeden.
Aye.
Mr. Martin.
Aye.
Ms. Stevens.
Aye.
Four ayes, one absent. Motion carries.
Okay, the next item would be committee reports. City Org meets next Tuesday, so we haven't met yet. Finance?
We have not met, because we did not have a finance director.
Okay. Infrastructure?
That meeting was also canceled. And then we will have the next one, the fourth Thursday of this month.
Parks and Rec and quality of life?
Yes. We met yesterday. We discussed, I think Jason gave an update last meeting of the expectation of when Upjohn and Pearson Park will be completed, the installation, which is mid-October. And then the splash pad is estimated early November at this point. Let's see. We also discussed looking into an assessment, quality of life assessment, starting a study for that, which will be coming to council. And we talked about the indoor playground. It's been a very successful thing. We have, on average, about 30 kids a day showing up with their parents. And so in just a month and a half, it's been about 400 people in total have attended. And, let's see. The ballfield, we're still working on the Kermit Gie Sports Complex, figuring out how to proceed forward with that project. And I think that cover everything.
Lindsay, can you explain, you said assessment. You're looking at an assessment. What is that an assessment of?
So it would be an assessment like a, basically, potentially a property tax assessment that could help to fund, 'cause currently there's no funding mechanism for parks, quality of life, the facilities that we have. For instance, we don't want to see what has happened with Penny Pool happen with any of our other facilities. So it's just starting, and we talked about this during the budget meetings, and I believe it was included in the budget to do a study of this. So, did that answer your question?
For the maintenance of all, upkeep, so it doesn't fall into bad shape.
Okay. Then the next one is use advisory, but you haven't met, right?
Correct.
Okay. The action, that's biannually. RECBB?
I can give a quick report. Eddie, did you want to? I'm sorry.
I'm gonna go right ahead, sir.
No, you were there too. I, I, forgive me.
I, I had to leave early, so...
Well, all right, okay. Quick report. Again, the billboard for the first time in Mojave, California on Highway 14, beginning September the 1st. Ramon is working on the graphics for this billboard. The marketing committee attended a marketing workshop. They discussed multiple topics. Donna Hocker presented, as Peggy mentioned, the discussion on the one-minute videos. I spoke up this morning in favor of that as well. I'm doing some little one-minute videos on, on base for our facilities. It's a very, very effective way to get the message out. Doug is gonna be attending the Film Liaison in California statewide, and a board members meeting on August 30th. For July, there was three productions. At Indian Corne Airport, there was, what, any productions for the month of July. Total community spent for July, $84,889. So that's it.
Okay. Economic Development Committee?
We'll meet next Wednesday.
Okay. Other committees. We had a GSA meeting and there was an appointment of both the TAC and the PAC. And they are now out doing the work, trying to develop a plan, seek funding, and giving input back to the board. And I'm looking forward to seeing the work that's done with that group. And our next meeting is the third Thursday at 10:00 of each month. And that's where we are. We did have a closed session, but no action was taken. We did, we're looking to find a water resources manager. Okay. Other committees, boards or commissions?
I met with the air pollution committee. We had a very interesting discussion. One of the locals in Tehachapi has been doing some, some farming, creating a lot of dust at 2:00 in the morning, at 3:00 in the morning when most of people sleep. And they wake up to a room, a house, full of dust. So they were reaching out, trying to find out how to resolve that issue, possibly without going to court or legal matters. That has become very serious because of some of the elderly people in the community that are experiencing health issues. So they're looking into how to minimize the finances that it would cost to get that individual to stop. They've talked to them, but they still consist on doing their own thing. So they're asking Ridgecrest, how can we, and other communities over there, how can we help them alleviate the problem? So we'll talk about it in our next meeting. Come up with some ideas.
Good. Thank you. Any other reports?
Eddie, has the wastewater committee met at all?
We have not met. We are, Mr. Spear, we're going to be meeting... Pardon me?
Shortly, soon.
Shortly. Okay.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, we're waiting for that final report to be completed and then we'll impanel the committee. It should be soon.
All right. Thank you. All right. City Managers Report?
Yes, Madam Mayor, just a quick update on the New World Financial System. We met with the New World representative yesterday. We're still progressing with implementation of the system, the HR component as well as payroll. Should be online approximately November 11th. Everything seems to be tracking well. Finance is working with our vendor to move this along. So it's progressing along and we're keeping track of it. Also, I have IT has now been placed under the Police Department flag. And I have Acting Chief McLaughlin like to come up and, and make a comment on that.
Okay. So after the last council meeting, obviously the system was not working so well. So with Mr. Martin's backing and, and Mr. Strand, IT came under my flag on Monday. So following that council meeting, and obviously priority number one was to get this system up and running. I had no idea what that system even looked like. And if you guys haven't seen what that system is, there's more buttons in there than, it's crazy. So Matt and Gary and Justin Dampier got together, put their heads together and worked a couple days trying to figure out what was wrong with it, 'cause everything appeared to be working. Afterwards, they found that the power amp had failed because it hadn't been turned off in about 12 years. But you couldn't turn it off because of the, I don't know the names of this equipment. I did learn what 60-cycle hum was, though. The, there's another component in there that prevents the feedback and, and all of these things. Well, because of that component, the system could never be shut off, because you had to reset, which takes time. And so it had, it had to stay on. So these guys, trust me, they worked extremely hard getting the system back up and running. And that is not an IT, it, it's not a computer in there. This is like, you gotta be a DJ to operate this stuff. So they did a wonderful job getting this thing back up and running. And they did it at a very minimal cost also, as well as by next council meeting, we should have the system in place. We were hoping it was gonna be today, but it didn't work out. We are also implementing a assisted hearing devices for people that have hearing disabilities. We are also implementing a assisted hearing devices for people that have hearing disabilities. They will be able to check out a, a receiver from the room there and just wear a little earphone and so they can also hear what's going on.
Fantastic.
Good job, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks to all your staff and everybody who made it happen.
Do you want me to talk about the other thing?
Yeah, you have a word.
Yep.
I discussed this with, I know many of the council members. We had in the, I guess, events over the past couple of weeks, some local kids of ours, if you hadn't seen it, it was all over Facebook, and it was being, the whole town was supporting our Bronco baseball team. They won their district championship, but then I believe it's the first time that somebody has won the regional championship and went on to super regions where the, there were some, some other great teams down there. Our team was great. They ended up losing to the team that is now playing for the World Series, so they should be commended, and I'd hope that the council would recognize them as well.
I had asked that. We have a proclamation, and we recognize these young, young men and women and their parents especially too, for the hard work and what they brought to this community and the pride. So are they going to be here?
I think we're going to try to get them, Mr. Martin wanted them at the next meeting, so we'll try to get with Rika on that.
I encourage all of you to be here. We need a good turnout to show our kids how proud we are of them and what they've done and accomplished, and, and there's glory in winning, even in losing, and they showed that to us. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Jim.
Future agenda items?
Yes, I just have one, and I've already talked with them about it, but Kern County is currently looking at what they will do for commercial cannabis sales and, and growth in the unincorporated county. And so I'd like us to come for the, I don't know if it'll be the next one or the one after that, the first one is September, but to be able to have a discussion on if we want to send, they're looking for comments, and so I.
It should be the first meeting in September, because I believe public comment closes September 10th.
So does that mean we need to get on there somewhat quick? Do we need to discuss this somewhat fast, seeing it's coming up in?
No, sir, we can take care of it, the first meeting is September. We should have a letter prepared in whatever direction the council wants to have their input, in enough time for the, the public comment closes.
Okay. I just don't want us to get caught and bypass us.
No, sir, we'll make sure that doesn't happen.
Okay.
Okay, so we have no future agenda items except the one. Now, mayor and council comments, so let's start down this way.
I, all I have, Madam Mayor and council, is I just wanted to say thank you to the staff for all that they do, the time they put in, not only the IT, but also Ms. Rika as well. You make us look good, and I thoroughly enjoyed the size of our package that we got tonight. And if we can keep it that way, I would love it that way. Because I actually get time to go home and see what my wife looks like.
Right there.
That's my distance.
No, I just want to, again, thank Peggy again for bringing up the idea about the voting thing. It's something we probably all had in the back of our mind, and she addressed it, brought it up, and we're doing something about it. Thank you very much.
Good, thank you, sir.
I just want to echo the thanks for the IT, for getting the sound up and running, and for Rika for the handy report on everything, and for Jed for your report too on the alcohol sales, so thank you.
Gary, thank you personally, buddy, for the, what y'all did with the sound. Thank you very much.
Matthew, that's Matt, I can't, I've got glare.
Thank you, thank all of y'all.
Okay, I have one item I would like us to look at putting on the agenda, because I'd like to talk about how you direct me to vote on the GSA items. I'd like to share a thought that was recently given to me about when, when we are doing policy or liability issues, clearly it comes from council to me to vote your recommendation. However, I think it presupposes that anything that is said in a GSA meeting after you've directed me how to vote doesn't make any difference. I think you have to recognize that I am not a rogue mayor nor rogue council member, that I am not going to sell off the city or the water or anything that's going to hurt in my mind based on the recommendations you've had. But I have heard people make comments at these meetings, and I say, "You know what? I'm glad I didn't have to vote on that particular item, because I agreed with them. It would have been different what I, what I would have recommended to you." And so I would like us to look at how we establish direction to your representative. I, I think it's unfair to say, it doesn't matter what anybody says in that meeting anymore, because I have already been directed. So you can have the greatest argument you've ever had, the greatest discussion on how things could or would be done, and it doesn't matter. I think it's a violation of their Brown Act rights to address us and have recourse. So I'm asking for us to find a way, if staff could help us find a way, to recognize the flexibility in the process. I don't know what that is, I'm not a legal eagle, but I do want to be able to have the right to say, "Council, you didn't hear everything that I heard. You didn't know everything that I was told." I want to have that flexibility. If you can trust me enough to know I'm not going to go run off the deep end, I expect you to do that. I think I've shown that, and I would like that. But let's find a way to legally do it and address the concerns that you all may have. So that's an item I'd like to have on the agenda. It, it doesn't need to be tomorrow, but I would like us to see how it's done elsewhere, because both Inyo County, Kern County, and San Bernardino County have told their representatives, "You vote as you see best. If there's a liability issue, look at it from the legal point of view, consult staff."
Madam Mayor, what we can do is we can just keep this on the agenda as a discussion item every council meeting, so we have the ability for council to discuss amongst themselves in public the issues with the GSA, and they can give you guidance in maybe the way, you know, you may vote, but obviously leaving it open that if something comes up that changes that, then they can then give you.
That's what I'm asking for, flexibility.
Yeah, we'll, we'll just keep it on the agenda then, as a discussion item, and then if, if there's nothing to discuss, then we'll just move on.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so there's no other council comments, so folks, we're going to adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job.